Madam Clerk, can I get a roll call?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Sylvia.
Present.
Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Councilmember Balls.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Bench.
Present.
Councilmember Garcia.
Present.
Councilmember Flores.
Present.
Councilmember Copeland.
Present.
Mayor Moore.
Present.
We have eight members present, zero absent.
Okay, let me try this again. Good evening again. This is a public meeting and I'm asking the audience to remain from clapping, booing, and making obnoxious noise so that we can actually hear what is going on. Another reminder, please, all councilwomen, please, men and women, please silence your phone. Audience, if you can silence your phone as well. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. As far as announcements, I want to remind everyone that on Monday, December 19th, council will conduct a committee of the whole at 4:00 PM to interview candidates for the council vacancy position. At 6:00 PM, council will have a single-subject special meeting to consider an appointment to the council vacancy, and at 6:30 PM, council will have their regular meeting. So next Monday, we have a full meeting schedule. Want to remind everyone as well that the collection of old Christmas lighting is being accepted at the Public Works Building, which is located at 1435 South Washington, and collection will run through January 15th of 2023. City Hall will be closed Friday, December 23rd, and Monday, December 26th for the Christmas holiday, and Friday, December 30th, and Monday, January 2nd for the New Year holiday. Mayor, we are at public hearings.
The purpose of the public hearing is for the public to address the council as a whole and for council to hear the information provided by the speaker for consideration regarding a special action being requested. The speaker must be limited to the subject of the public hearing. Please begin by stating your name, your position, should you support or oppose, or on the subject of the hearing. The first speaker will be considered the main speaker and is allowed 10 minutes. Thereafter, it is three minutes. Public hearings are not a question-and-answer period, so therefore, questions must not be directed to individual councilmembers, or to city staff, or to the audience. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Our public hearing tonight is regarding the MDNR Michigan Sparks Grants for the Riverfront Iron Bell Trail Rehabilitation Project.
Do we have anyone here to speak on this matter?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and council. Travis Hare, city engineer here for City of Saginaw. I just want to talk real quick about this. This Michigan Spark Grant Program is new. This was a newly created program as part of the ARPA Federal Package, the same type of money that we are getting with the city funds as well. As the municipality, we are allowed to submit up to three applications. They have to be contiguous pieces and under the control of the city. The two on the ballot here for us are two trail projects, and it's actually the rehabilitation of the existing riverfront trail, which is also part of the Iron Bell Trail Network. The first piece goes from Wick's Park, which we just completed this summer, completed that piece of the trail, goes from there over to Ojibwe Island, and we will also be redoing the trailhead parking right there on Ojibwe Island as well as part of that first grant. The second grant application is going to be for the northern section between Ojibwe Island and up to the intersection of James and Water. And so both of these are, the trails are already there, we are rehabbing what's there, they're in pretty poor condition, it's time. What's nice about these grants is there's no match requirement, up to $1 million per application. So a project can cost more than $1 million, it's just anything over $1 million would be city funds. But neither one of our applications that we are requesting are over $1 million. So if approved for the full amount, we would not have any match whatsoever on these projects. We do have eligibility for one more application. These are the only two we're applying for during the first round, and then what'll happen is in, I think, March or April, they haven't exactly announced when they're going to be awarding these yet, but in March or April, we'll know if we got the funding. If we did not, then they automatically go into the next round, and then we can add a third application if need be, or if want. I'm sure there's plenty of other projects that we could add in for this. So I just wanted to give that brief explanation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address this issue? Is there anyone else who would like to address this issue for the third and final time? Is there anyone else who would like to address this issue? Hearing done. I need a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Is there move and support? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. We are now at public input.
Okay. The purpose of the public, okay, I'm sorry. I'd like to welcome all of the people who signed up to address the council this evening. Please speak slowly and clearly so we don't miss what you have to say. You will be called to the podium by the clerk. Speakers have three minutes limit to speak, in which time the clerk will be timing you. Remember again, just a friendly reminder to be courteous and respectful to the members in who's speaking, and no booing, clapping, obnoxious behavior. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. Our first speaker tonight is Pamela Henley.
Hello.
You can pull it down, Ms. Pam.
Okay. Okay. I received a grant from the city to have some work done to my house. The work was done in November. They did a beautiful job on my roof, and I appreciate the grant. My porch, I messed up. The guy told me I brought pictures, that they were going to build me two decks. I had nice cemented porches, but in between the step was messed up. You know, the piece in between this middle part was messed up. He said, "No, we're going to take them down and build you two new decks." And you should see my house, they messed my house up. The porches, I got pictures. One side is way longer than the other side. My front porch was a cemented port with white railings. I can't even get a, I can get a chair up there, but I can't sit in the chair. So there's no purpose of me having a front porch there. And I did bring pictures. I'd never been to one of these meetings. I need to, because I'm telling you, I cry every time I look at my house. And then, like, when they gave the money out, my understanding was that, that you can't move, sell, or rent your house out for five years. I understand that. I've gotten grants before. Well, a couple of days later, my insurance company called me, and they're on my insurance policy now. And then they got some kind of mortgage up against my deed. I would have never done that if I was told that's what they was going to do. My house is paid for. And I'm like, what if my house catch fire next year? They're going to want their money before I get paid out of, that's not right. I would have never accepted it.
Okay, this is not a question-and-answer period. It's going to be referred to our city manager.
Okay.
If you will it for me, please, Ms. Pam, if you would hand the clerk those pictures. Do you have your information on back of them so that she knows it's you?
I'll have that.
Okay.
Thank you, Pamela.
No problem.
Mayor, our next speaker on the list, Audrey, has canceled prior to the meeting, so we will go on to Teri Alexander. Teri's not here. Okay, let's go to Nicole Liggins. And council, there is a handout before you from Nicole.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, council. My name is Nicole Liggins. I am the president of Guided Grace Family Youth Services. I am the CEO of Guided Grace, and I am the owner of Building Blocks Childcare and Preschool Center, all located in the city of Saginaw. I'm here today to speak to you about Guided Grace, which is a mental health agency that was founded in 2016 and is thriving now. I wanted to give you all some information. I know that there are some funds that are available, and I wanted to talk to you guys about the need as it pertains to mental health services and what Guided Grace brings to the table. Guided Grace is different. Our services are different, what we bring. We have virtual reality therapy, which is something that within 120-mile radius, no one has. What that is, is it is an altruistic way of delivering mental health services. It is fairly, fairly new, yet there is evidence-based information and data that supports this method of therapy, and it has been very successful amongst our veterans as it relates to PTSD and some of the other modalities that we work within. We also have services for our children and youth. We have run various programs, and you should see in the handouts, I just gave some examples of some of the things we did. Even in pandemic, we funded ourselves a program because we knew that the fallout from COVID with our children would be bad. So we have a vast array of services that we provide. We have a lot of collaborations within the city. I just checked information with my secretary, and actually, within the last quarter, we have served over 7,000 families in Saginaw. So we have been doing the hard work with boots on the ground. On a macro scale, we have been working with Lansing and the State of Michigan Department of Education. We were recognized, actually, for one of our programs back in 2021 that we ran, and we were featured for the Michigan After School Collaborative. And I'm here today to, A, let you know who we are, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Henry Hill.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
Mayor Moore, Pro Tem, council members. My name is Henry Hill, founder of Hill's Second Chance Program. I'm going to give you a brief introduction with my youth program offer. I've been coming down here trying to get funding for the youth program. Hill's Second Chance Organization is designed to help youths and adults. This program will assist them with learning skills and will incorporate them back into society. They will build our skills of effective communication, thinking, critical thinking, and overcome conflict. They will also learn how to set future goals, build resumes, and complete job applications to obtain employment, with such skills promoting the development of self-esteem. An objective of Hill's Second Chance is to encourage social development, strength, observation, and perception to help expand the views of participants, giving the youth and young adults an enriching life experience where they will build and bond with their peers and community. In extent of urgency, it is necessary that our community get the help it needs. To avail and educate risk youth and young adults is mandatory. We must make it a priority. They need to know that a second chance is possible and obtainable. There is a need to help our youth and young adults not to become a victim of gang violence and placed into the criminal justice system or re-entering said system. There is an urgency in our city. Saginaw residents and I personally are fed up with all the violence in our community. Citizens and myself are tired of escalating brutality. We also are tired of attending funerals and balloon releases of family and friends lost to gun violence. A couple of months ago, a young lady was killed, a 16-year-old girl was killed. This is sad. 16-year-old girl was killed in a drive-by shooting. And a lot of these kids doing stuff because they ain't been mentored to, they ain't having nobody to look up to, none of that. A young man that I was mentoring to for the last four years, he was 10 when I started mentoring to him. He 14 now. He confessed to a murder for two slices of pizza. And he's out at the juvenile detention center. I called out there today, and I actually was trying to go out there to visit with him. He's a good kid. I don't think he did what they say he did, but nevertheless, he don't know his minimum round of rights. And by him not knowing his minimum round of rights and other things, stuff like this going to happen. Unfortunately, if we don't want to implement some type of program, violence is going to continue to happen in our community. I've been encouraging people to support me with Hill's Second Chance Organization so we can further mentor.
Motion to extend the speaker's time by 30 seconds.
It's a motion on the floor. Do I get a second?
Second, no second.
Call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Well, my point being is...
You got to wait a minute.
Okay.
Thank you.
My point being is, I can't do this by myself. I mentor to children all the time. I did 37 years in prison myself at the age of 16. I don't want no child to go to prison and experience nothing like that. It's horrible. And it's even more worser out here seeing this stuff happen to these kids every day. And what I always say in closing, together we stand, divided we fall. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Our next speaker is Anna Patton. Give me a minute, Anna, please.
Okay.
Okay, I'm ready.
Good evening, Mayor Moore, city manager, Pro Tem, and the other city council members. I just got up here to three things. I wanted to thank you guys so much for sending streets or whatever department that came out and picked up the lands and logs that was on the 500 block of North Fourth a couple of weeks ago. I appreciate that. I got up here and I was complaining about nobody's coming over there doing it, but you guys made it happen. I bugged the heck out of Mayor Moore, and you guys made it happen, and I just thank you guys. Another thing, also, I want to thank you guys. I complained about you guys not working enough with the county land bank in the county. And I will also want to thank you guys for working with this Saginaw County Land Bank because Tom Miller and his department for releasing lots so that people can buy the lots that extend next to their property. So you guys have been rocking it lately, and I really appreciate what you guys is doing because that gives the people a chance to extend their yards, is going to keep the city clean, and is going to give others a way to buy some lots and keep it clean. And so I'm just thankful for what I'm seeing. Like she says, a new season, you guys. I think it's going to be a new season. And then, thirdly, I would love to see ARPA money spent for our youth, for our community center. I too grew up around the community centers, and it does work. What I want to say is, my concern is, once the ARPA funds is gone, how will these facilities be taken care of? That's my thought in my head. Like, how are they going to keep on running? Are we going to, what's going to happen? Is there going to be money to keep these things going once the ARPA funds is gone? I'm talking about security. I'm just trying to figure out in my head, is it going to be enough? Because the ARPA money is not going to be there forever. So I'm praying and hoping that as we go forward with the community, for the youth, that we'll come up with some good ideas, or whoever gets the money, I hope a lot of them get it, because they have some really great ideas to keep it going. I don't want to see these organizations get the money in a year or two and it's gone. I want this thing to keep on going. So whoever gets the money, I hope it keeps going because I want to see basketball, volleyball, soccer, tutoring, recreation, technology. I want to see it all. And we can do it. We can do it here. But we got to make sure that wherever the money is allocated, that it'll be right. Thank you for everything you do. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Gwendolyn Thompson-McMillan.
Good evening, Mayor Moore, Mayor Pro Tem, and all council members, as well as everyone else who is here. I am Dr. Gwendolyn Thompson-McMillan, professor of literacy in the Department of Reading and Language Arts at Oakland University, and also First Lady of St. Paul Missionary Baptist Church on 15th, and the project director for the Read, Lead, Succeed Program, of which I talked about last time I was here. Thank you so much for setting aside $10 million for youth programs. I applaud you for that. I express my gratitude. And I want to respond to Councilman Williams that the Read, Lead, Succeed Program actually works with parents. We, in fact, what we do is tutor K through 5 students, but we also take the entire family. So it's a family literacy program where we train the parents how to teach their children. And so the other children who are in the house will benefit as well. And then I also want to comment on Councilwoman Sylvia's comment about the church. Because who we are is not a community center, but we are a faith-based community that includes 25 churches. And so I want to just implore you not to forget about the faith-based community, because that is who Read, Lead, Succeed is. And so it's a group of community tutors who are working with children in the community. Now, since I spoke with you three weeks ago, 350 more children here in Saginaw have now been put on the priority list, because we have an additional group of people who, because of their reading scores, are on the priority list. So this is not something that can be set aside while you think about the capital structures and all of those things. We want you to also think about the intellectual infrastructure of our children, because if they can't read, they won't do well in life. So please, think about us, support us, and we are ready to begin immediately. The Read, Lead, Succeed team is ready to work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Julian Morris.
Good evening. First, I want to say, I wrote this before you set aside $10 million for you, so I thank you for that. But I still want to read and make my comments. My name is Julian Morris, and I'm a sophomore at Saginaw High School. Thank you all for this opportunity to speak before you tonight. I come before you, and I ask you to, once again, take young people seriously. Consider us when you create the budget for this city. Consider us when you look at how to bring job opportunities to Saginaw. Consider us when you do your strategic planning. Consider us with these ARPA funds, and consider us when you seek out funding opportunities for Saginaw. As most of you know, I started my own business, Swag Magazine, when I was 13, and in virtual school. I've been in business for two years, and I've seen some success because of the support from my Saginaw community. So many people in this room today have invested in me in some way. What could happen if the kids from the neighborhood house had the same support as me? What could be produced if the kids from First Ward were given some attention? Please consider the youth in this community as an investment. Invest in us now and watch your investment grow into the next mayor, the next city manager, the next councilmembers, business owners, editor of the Saginaw News, and more. We need your support now more than ever. We're struggling to catch up from the pandemic. We're struggling mentally, and we're struggling in dealing with trauma, and we need help. We need support, and we need love. Our schools can only do so much. We need our community centers like the NAIVE, First Ward, and Horton Jones. We need Youth Development Corporation for the kids who need a second chance. We need our churches to partner with schools for after-school programming and tutoring. We need all of you to help get us through. Again, I ask you to invest in us. We are not a lost generation. We are not beyond help, and we are your future. We are your legacy. We are a reflection of you. So what do you want that reflection to look like? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Patsy Willis.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Hello, Mayor, Pro Tem, city manager. My name is Patsy Willis, and I received a grant for $10,000. And they didn't do everything they were supposed to do, but they put a fuse box in my, a breaker box in my house. And now, everything popping off. If I cut my microwave on, in the toaster, fuse could blow. If I got a fireplace and one of my kids decide to cut the iron off, fuse will blow. I was baking a cake. I looked, thought my cake was cooking. It wasn't cooking. I am afraid. They say it's doing what it's supposed to do, but not every time you cut something on. And I'm afraid of that. I mean, I decorated my house, and I can't even cut my lights on. No Christmas tree. And I don't think that's fair. They came out, and they approved it, and it shouldn't have been approved. I know that, and I'm not an electrician. TNS Construction hired the electrician. I don't understand it. And the killing part about it, they supposed to have been putting a roof on my porch. I supplied all of that. They put a surround in my bathroom. They put a shower head. In my bedroom, connects to my bathroom, is a door they put up there. What, you know, that was not $10,000. It make it make sense. And I'm afraid to be in my house when things being cut on and off. My nieces and nephews come, they're old enough to be there by themselves, and I can't say, well, you do this, do that. It's just, that don't make sense. Why do y'all allow people that's supposed to be sitting a, whatever, I got frustrated, to approve the stuff, and they know it's not right. Somebody's getting paid. That's the bottom line. $10,000 for a fuse box, a surround, a shower head, and a...
Motion to extend the speaker's time for 30 seconds. Motion to extend the speaker's time for 30 seconds.
Okay.
Wait, we got a phone on.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Just one minute. Ms. Willis, you getting 30 extra seconds to finish your statement.
Okay, ma'am, I'm ready.
Okay. I mean, it just don't make sense. How can you claim to fix something, allow me to get $10,000, and I don't know where it's went to, because it don't reflect in my house? I bought all the shingles, all the wood. Who, who, who it went to? Who, who it, who it went to? I didn't get anything out of it. Because every time you turn around...
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jeffrey Bowles.
Good evening, council staff again. I came before you, I'm coming before you this time, to talk specifically about the green zone. And to be clear, I'm not coming to point any fingers or lay any blame on anybody. Just simply a point of clarity, hopefully. There are people in the city that are trying to buy properties. And from our understanding, and now I'm speaking as CAP, I'm speaking as President of CAP, from our understanding, when we went through the master plan process, the selling point on passing the master plan was to get rid of the green zone. Now, if that didn't happen, if there is a misunderstanding on our behalf, I'd like, it's a point of clarity. I hope that somebody can clear that up for us because we have people that are trying to buy properties in the city that were told, and we, you know, understood it as if this master plan went through, that the green zone was no more. It's our position that the green zone isn't replaced anyway. That the green zone isn't, it's not in our zoning code anywhere. It's not a thing anyway, and it shouldn't be reflected in any city department. That's our position. But we want a point of clarity. We want a point of clarity to finally clear it up. Somebody let us know what the position of the city is on the green zone. And we also have Mr. Tom Miller here. Hey, if he can come up here and tell us, somebody has to tell us as citizens something about the green zone. Like, again, it's CAP's position that the green zone isn't a thing anymore. It was only something that was done back in 2010 and, you know, prior to that, just to get rid of certain blight. Now that program is no more. That's what we understand. If we can get that cleared up, we'd appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mayor, we are now at remarks of council.
Councilmembers, remember you have, excuse me, you have a three-minute limit as well, and we'll start this segment with Councilwoman Garcia.
Good evening. Thanks for the speakers that spoke. Appreciate the positive or negative feedback. It does help us grow. And I know me personally, as a person, to know what we can do to better, improve. And so I do appreciate hearing the positive from colleagues here. I know they've been working hard, and I'm just stepping into this position. I'm just trying to take in everything as my new role as a new council member. I appreciate the young Mr. Morris for speaking. I was a young entrepreneur myself at five years old. So I know, and I want to look more into your magazine because journalism has been one of my hearts as well. I do my own little news feed on Facebook. So that's kind of why I'm here, because of that concern, citizens of the community. So yeah, we do need the youth programs. So I'm excited to get started on my new project with my colleagues over here with our $10 million bucket. I like that word. So yeah, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Councilman Flores.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Saginaw. Thank you, Mrs. Liggins, for the presentation. I'm really interested in the VR set for therapy. I'll be contacting you to see if I can get some type of overview of that. That sounds really interesting to me. And then also, we do have your application through ARPA that we received back in June. I think it's an important thing that you raise, and you're doing a great service to the community. Mr. Morris, doesn't hurt to be ahead of the curve, right? Sometimes? So you're, as usual, right on the pulse of the city. I'm also excited, like my colleague, Councilwoman Garcia, had said about figuring out how we're going to spend this ARPA funds for the youth and, as Councilman Copeland had said, for also the elderly, because we cannot forget about them. He makes a great point. So not too much other than that. Mr. Hill, always great to see you. Thank you for what you're always bringing to the table as well. Just last, we still haven't found Mr. Cosby. And if anybody has any information, again, he's a 21-year-old individual went missing on November 5th, 2022. His mother's still looking for him, as is the city police department. So if you have any information on that, call Detective Brandon Jebb at 989-759-1762, or call 911 if you have any information. And I posted that on my Facebook page, but I'll post it again. But I just want to kind of continue to have that be front and center until we find this young gentleman. But that's it for me. Thanks so much.
Next, we have Councilman Copeland.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you to our public commenters that have come and shared. Great hearing about our programs that are going on in the city, and thank you for our citizens who share their concerns. I do want to, while we're just mentioning Mr. Morris and what he's doing in the community, December 18th, we're aware that he received a grant from Facebook, Meta, and the Zuckerberg Foundation. And they put in some hard work to talk about the education in the city of Saginaw and how COVID impacted education. And there will be an actual movie premiere, December 18th, at 6:30 at Success Academy. And I ask that, you know, this will be an opportunity for us to hear what has happened, hear from the young people, what happened during COVID and how their impact. And I think it'd be good for us to hear that, especially this $10 million that we have for youth and development, to hear from those young people in that video and what's going on and where they feel they need the support. I also want to make some time and thank Councilwoman Shorza for her work, her commitment to our city. She was a great colleague. She's not gone, but she's not on our team anymore. But I at least wanted to mention the great work that she was a supporter of. And I'm wishing the great things for her and her success, and peace and love to her as she continues on. As I want to say the same for Councilmember Ostache. And it was a pleasure working with him as well. So I didn't get a chance to do that last week, but I wanted to make sure, just to make mention of the great colleagues that I've had the opportunity to work with as a council member here. And that is all that I have. You all have a great and safe weekend. Please, keep in mind those students who are graduating this weekend and those students who have finals this week. If you know any college students, just send them a text message, send them a hug, send them some money, all right? Just to let them know that you're thinking about them and you're there to support them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Sylvia.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I'd like to thank all of our speakers again, again. I also like to thank, and maybe some new faces in here now, for coming to council today to listen, to share, meet us after council, after council, etc. And as I'm listening, maybe other people don't pick up some things I do. I just happen to see a collaborative effort that could probably possibly take place just by listening to some of the speakers this evening. So I will be contacting a couple of people and see what the likelihood is of you all doing a collaborative effort together. So anyway, thank you so very much.
Thank you. Now, next we'll have Councilman Williams.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Good evening again. I just want to say real quick that I'm hoping, Mr. Manager, that you can get us an update on Ms. Henley and Ms. Willis's situations. If you can get it to me in an email, that'd be fine. I just want to follow up and see what that situation is about. That would be appreciated. That's all I have.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Bowles.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I was thinking about, you know, post-stress syndrome disorder. You know, and I think about that, and we have soldiers that go off to war, and due to the situation, I'm seeing everything that's happening there. They come back here and they have these disorders where they can't sleep at night, and they go into this stuff. And I think about our children. You know, all the stress that they go through. Maybe come from a fatherless home. You know, maybe just the mother there to try to take care of the kid, and all the situation that she got to go through to take care of the kids. Maybe she's working and ain't got time to spend with the kids. Or either they go to school and they're getting bullied. And some of the kids, to stop the bullying, they get involved in gangs and stuff like that and gang up on other people. You know, one guy ganging up on me, and I'm gonna get some other guys to take care of you. And that's saying, you know, we got bullets flying all over the place, and we got kids that's growing up with their fellow students being murdered in the streets of the city of Saginaw and all over the United States. And I think about that, and I think about this city council, and some of the things that we could do to try to stop that happening from the city, in the city of Saginaw. And I personally been involved in Big Brothers and Sisters program for over 30 years, trying to do my best to help out. And I think I've been successful. Thank God, because none of my little brothers have gotten any major trouble. One of them got a wedgie one time from a police officer. Haven't had any problems with him since. And other kids I've been involved with, they've been doing good. So I know by us opening up community centers and getting mentors in those community centers that it's going to help out alleviate some of the problems that we have with youth violence here in the city of Saginaw. It may even help out with having less fatherless homes when kids have kids out of wedlock and things of that nature that the community centers can teach them about, abstinence, being abstinent, you know, with sex and stuff like that, and teach them about alcohol and drugs. Those are the things that destroying our community here in the city of Saginaw. So this COVID came down, killed a lot of people, and it just destroyed our community. But our government has sent us some money here to try to help us straighten those issues out. So we got to make sure that this money get to the right places it need to get to, to the counseling centers, to the community centers, to the churches, every way that we can help our kids out, to the reading programs. We need to make sure this money get there so we can help improve our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem bench.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. Good evening again. I too would like to extend my gratitude to our public speakers here at our regular meeting. Ms. Patton, thank you for your kind and positive words. And thank you, Mr. Councilman Williams, for asking for that request because I was going to ask the same for Ms. Henley and Ms. Willis. Certainly, I don't know enough about the situation to weigh in or comment, but it's certainly sad to see people so sincerely struggling with something that should have been a good thing from the outset. So I look forward to hearing more about what happened there. I really just want to say that, again, we're fortunate. We have a lot of folks here who are advocating for their agencies and the work that they're doing in the community. And hopefully, some of you in the audience can breathe a little bit of a sigh of relief knowing that there is a dollar figure assigned to your bucket, and we're moving forward with those allocations at some point here in the near future. But thank you very much for everything you guys do, and thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, again, I'd like to thank all the public speakers. You know, it is really, it's really good. I'm really glad to see that both sessions, this chamber is full. And I don't need to see, I'd like to see this continue after ARPA dollars are gone. Because you're here now. Can you please come back when the money is dispersed? How can we know what you want to say to us if you don't come? One of the things that, Mr. Julian, thank you so much, because I knew you had a speech, and then you came up there and you was looking like, do I say it or what? You always are elegant speaker, so you did well. And that's right, read your speech because you took the time to write it. So yes, thank you for reading your speech. It's people like Mr. Julian and the young Pratt boy that was here. That's where it starts. I don't have nothing against, I started at 15 working for Parks and Recreation at Houghton School. Anybody that didn't know, know Houghton School was the hangout and the shower swimming pool. So I know all about what a community center can do. But also know, we as a city, we can do even more. Because we need to start embracing the Julian, the young Pratt. We need to start embracing all of these children. And don't pick and choose who you want, because all of them are babies. So I just believe that in my heart, yeah, I'm happy with the money that's in the bucket. I just don't want to see it misused. And that would be a terrible thing for us to go through all of this, and people can't keep their hand of the deal up. So you know what? The city is moving forward. And so it's like, what do TDJ say? Get ready, get ready, get ready. Because Saginaw is gonna be on this map, whether y'all want it to or not. That's my goal in the next two years, is so that Saginaw becomes a household word. And when you hear Saginaw, you just light up. Girl, did you been down there? They cool in Saginaw. That's how I want us to be known, as the city of love and embracing. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, our next order of business is the reports from the city manager.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I did have some ARPA updates, but I also wanted to advise council the next council meeting at Management Update will have our FY 2022 audit presentation from our auditors. It's complete now, and the Finance Director, Lori Brown, and OMB Director, Yolanda Bland, and I met with our auditing firm and controller last week. So I do want to thank our staff for continuing to work hard to provide necessary information and to complete the audit. All of our departments do provide information for the document, especially given that it's a CAFRA report. And also, I want to go back a number of years because we did have our controller contract. So on the last council meetings, so we wanted to add something to what it used to be like in the city of Saginaw when we were doing our audit. So Plant Moran started working as the, actually, they were brought in as advisors in, I think, 2007 or '08. And then they became the interim controller in 2000, late 2008. And then I think the contract was, full-time contract was '08 or '09. So prior to that, we had consecutive audits submitted to the state of Michigan more than six months past due. I think one was over a year late. And that was a result of the work, I think, probably being too much for the staff that we had down there in the controller's office. So the controller's office used to be staff of, I believe it had five employees, which was a controller, deputy controller, and I think three staff members. So right now, we have the ability to pull people from an entire firm to do that work with the knowledge to do it. So I do say the audits were late. That throws up a major red flag with Michigan Treasury, and they start looking at everything that you're doing. A second point is our monthly bank reconciliations. Those were probably close to, I'm looking at Yolanda because she was here then, but it was, I believe it was at least six months behind on the bank reconciliations, too. So we didn't know where we were standing on a daily basis with our finances. And when you don't know where you stand, you can't manage that situation either, even to make sure you're paying your bills and paying your employees. And believe me, from, prior to coming here, I also worked in local government. You're really going to hear it if you don't pay your employees. That's when you're going to have lines out the door, too. So the ability to have that stuff done and have the audit done on time, it's due within six months after the close of the fiscal year. So I'll tell you then, if it was a year behind, it wasn't going, fiscal year, so fiscal year '22, that wouldn't be done until July or August of '23. And it's done now. We submit it early now, prior to the deadline. So that's all from the work that our staff are doing. I give a lot of credit to our staff, even though we have it contracted out. But we are working more with them, and I think we will continue to evolve that service as the years go on. In the next few years, Lori and I are looking at doing some different things. But just to look at where we were and where we are now, it's amazing. And just to get that work done is something that, it allows you to do the other management facets in the city, so that's not all you're concentrating on. So I wanted to thank the staff for that, that work that they do on that. And also, as an update, we are, we have had... And, um, also as an update, um, we are, uh, we have had contact with the Saginaw Housing Commission, and we're working on that agreement. We have a few items to update on that. Uh, since the last meeting, I have also talked with Congressman Kildee's office, and, uh, they are very excited about this project and, uh, very encouraged by it and supportive of it, especially utilization of ARPA funds for this. This is something that Congressman Kildee's office has been working on with the city for probably the last eight or nine years at least. We've, we've been meeting on trying to do something with this property, so I think this is a very positive move. And also, I did want to comment on the home rehabilitation program, the furnace replacement, and thank you to our staff for working over the past two Saturdays, and also during the week, they were taking, um, appointments for applications, and the hallway was full all week with people applying. Uh, they have four, about four hundred and thirty applications over that period. So now they'll be vetting them. Um, to give an idea though, uh, we probably could, all the money that's allocated that program probably wouldn't fund all of these. So, uh, hopefully, we'll be able to help them. Uh, and also, um, there is our potent, some potential partners, so I'm gonna be researching that to see if some other, other organizations can also do some grant funding for us and, and help fund some of these things, especially if we, if they can assist it and make our money go farther so that we can help more, more people, I think that will be great. So I'll be reaching out for that. And, uh, kind of going back to our, our special meeting, item number two on the agenda tonight is for strategic planning session on January thirteenth. What I wanted to focus on for that meeting was our ARPA funds. So I think that goes well with what, uh, you all talked about during your special meeting about getting everything ready to push, uh, those funds out and move approvals. So we'll, we'll probably have some, uh, department updates during that time as well, but, um, we're gonna ask Guide House co, to come as well to that meeting and talk about where we are, and we can talk about these allocations that, uh, that we'll be meeting with the, the group about, uh, over the next couple weeks as well. And with that, I did, uh, we talked a little bit about this at the last meeting, and, um, as the mayor mentioned, we did meet with the county, um, and I believe the county had five million dollars left. They had, they had app, applications that we don't have, and we talked about those, and th, those groups just didn't apply to the city, as far as I'm aware. But there were some in common, uh, that, that the county was looking at capital expenditures for, and, um, they had asked for an update from us, and their meeting is tomorrow. And I know, uh, one of the things that we have Guide House doing is to look at how we can leverage funds, so I know David wanted to talk a little bit about that.
Thank you. So now that we have the ten million as a bucket, um, there is one opportunity that I'd like to make sure is in front of you, so that we don't miss this opportunity. The county will make their final decisions on their ARPA funds. And the overlap that does exist with a lot of the conversation that was had by the committee and internally our discussion, our two, uh, entities, the First Ward and Saginaw CAC, um, they're looking at putting five hundred thousand dollars, uh, towards capital expenditures, pending that we commit five hundred thousand dollars to capital expenditures. That's not saying that's the limit on what we'd want to spend, but making that commitment allows them tomorrow to go ahead and make that commitment. So if you were all able to make a commitment of five hundred thousand dollars toward capital expenditures, to the First Ward and Saginaw CAC, out of the ten million dollar bucket that you just identified today, um, contingent on county match tomorrow, um, that would be, uh, helpful in terms of finding those additional funds and matches as they are available. Are there any questions about that?
So what are you asking?
I'm asking you to motion, uh, to commit a half a million dollars to the First Ward and a half a million dollars to Saginaw CAC, pe, for capital projects, pending the county matches those funds as well.
Would that be, I don't know, that kind of goes against what we just discussed and said. So I mean, if, if they can do what they're gonna do, they should, could possibly wait on us to make our decisions.
They could?
I don't think it's fair to the other entities that we have waiting to just say, okay, we're gonna give these two entities, these dollars, and the rest of y'all wait till we, I, I don't think it's right. I think, I mean, I'm, 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 I'm not saying that I don't want to give those two entities money, I'm saying that we have several other entities that are also waiting, and I don't think we should be put in a position to have to, uh, make that decision at this particular time, that's just my opinion.
So I just want to be clear that the county is looking to allocate all their funds by the end of the year.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see anything wrong. I know we're gonna at least give, give that to, uh, those organizations, uh, maybe even more to the First Ward Community Center, I hope. So I would like to make a motion that we-
Not during the manager's report.
All right now, and I'm ready to go.
We, we just, I know, I'm, uh, so you saw some of the staff leave. So they wanted to go out and start planning, since we want to try to have a quick turnaround time, so this is an item that, um, they think, or the group felt that you need to be aware of, because the county will be, um, voting tomorrow, and, uh, and I don't know, I'm not saying that they will or will not allocate, but they did want, um, I will be sending, uh, what, what we did tonight to the county administrator before I leave the building, so if that's what we wanted to report out to make you aware, that's what, that's where the county stands.
Thank you. So that mean we can make this motion a little later? All right, thank you.
Clarity. I was in that meeting, and there are some groups, and, because it comes off wrong, I understand Councilwoman Sylvia's point, those were two entities that they wanted to do. We have way more than them. So when we talk about some of the other groups, like the Big Brother, the, uh, Boys and Girls Club, uh, the name, they, they gave us the names they had. And, and their question, or they asked to us that same day was, if we get this, will y'all give it? But we know that we've got some more groups that we plan to give to. You know, there, there's, there was, I don't know how many lists that we started, we started, and so we went to checking, and we got down to some names. So, Councilwoman Sylvia, I know, but I'm just saying, that's not the only thing that we plan to do. We do, because you guys started a list already, right or wrong?
That's true.
Okay.
But it, it was a list that was not agreed upon-
Okay, no, 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 I'm saying-
Yeah.
But there was a list in discussion.
Yes.
So therefore, if there was a list in discussion, we've got, we gonna move forward with everything.
Okay, more money.
You know, so, I think the ask, I don't think the ask, I know what the ask is, the county wants to go ahead and allocate theirs, and they're asking that we do the same. Because there was some things that they had on their list, I said no to, I'm gonna be honest. There was some stuff that they put on the table in front of me, and I said no, because in some programs, they don't affect the city. So, he's asking us what we want to do.
We gotta make the motion later.
Yeah, we're just-
Right, it's a discussion.
Yep, he just wanted to make you aware of that, so that's the last item on the management update.
Okay. Yes.
Uh, two questions, if I'm, uh, Madam Mayor. How long have we known about this conversation and what the county has asked? Because it would have been nice to have a, a email that gave all of council an update from that meeting. And then my second question regarding this, oh, I do want to just say thank you to our city staff, because that's amazing, four hundred applications, I'm so happy to hear that. My second question is, is this what you were discussing, because of something like this we see a need for four hundred applications, that we can then come back and make some adjustments to those numbers, if we now see that there's a major need for furnaces?
Yeah, so first, I think the county administrator sent that same email to all of the council members, and it indicated-
Babys.
Yeah, and then we met with them, we met with them last week.
Yeah, yeah, I read.
So they, I think he had their entire list on there, we met with them last week. Um, and yeah, that's what I do want to see, is for the furnaces, I, I did want to see the number so that we could let council know what the need in the city is for it, and it's gonna take them a, intake of the four hundred plus is good, I think the review is gonna be, um, gonna take them a little while. So once we get that review of the list and, and, uh, we want, I want to get that back to council so you can see what the total need was, in case you do want to allocate more, or you do want to, um, modify the program at all, uh, because I, I do think this, having the, uh, working furnace, I think is, can be a matter of life and death for, for some of the people that are in that situation.
Thank you.
Yes. Councilman Balls.
As far as the furnaces is concerned, I'm sure, I'm not one hundred percent sure, but I can imagine some people came in for the furnace repair or replacement, even though their furnaces are working. Are the, are all these furnaces gonna be inspected to see if they actually need to be replaced?
Um, yes, they will be. A first step after taking the application and vetting it is actually having an inspector go into the house and look at it. Um, everyone was told that there would be four individuals that would come into their house, first one being the inspector, and then it would be the contractors, three contractors coming in so that they will know what they're dealing with.
Yeah, I'm just saying, because I can imagine, hey, if I can get a new furnace, let me get me a new furnace, even though I may not even need one.
Yeah, and they may, and I think one of the key criteria was it had to be twenty years old.
Yeah.
Twenty years are over, and that's, that's one of our potential partnering opportunities, is Consumers Energy is looking to increase that efficiency so that people aren't paying, uh, to send heat up their, up their exhaust chimney, or, um, using more, uh, natural gas than they need to to efficiently heat their homes.
Maybe a good time for Consumer Powers need to be partnering with us.
They are. Consumer Powers contacted me today.
Yeah.
And they're gonna partner with us. Their partnership will include, uh, water heaters and where the electronics, or I don't know, I'm, see, I'm not mechanically inclined, I, I pay people to do my work. But if our codes or our numbers are not up to eighty percent, they're gonna bring them up to eighty point nine percent, so that people will have fuel-efficient heat coming in and out of their house. Not only are they gonna help us with the furnaces, they also gonna tag team with us for the windows.
Yeah.
So, and they plan to put Matt Stylus on the table. So we've got, I mean, I've got some other things, some other people I'm working on, you know, that, that, that's always, trying to make it work so that our people can get. I do have a question for the city manager, though. I know that in your report, you re-acknowledged, and I do thank the staff as well. However, it's called, I had some people that had no heats, and I need to know, I know that we talked about they're being top on the list, so is it gonna take a little while still for them, or can we sort of expedite this? It's, it, it means if we can, I'm just asking the question.
So we had our second round this Saturday.
Right.
And so there's a lot of individuals that still need to turn in information, so-
Okay.
We're expected to have like our complete list by Wednesday of this week, and then we're gonna be moving forward with, um, the selection criteria, so we're hoping to turn around pretty fast.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Yes, yes, Councilwoman.
Thank you. So I just guess I'll reiterate or say what I want to say. The question that Councilman Copeland asked, when was these meetings going on or whatever, I, I would like to get that answer, because I feel, I know I'm at a disadvantage, that whatever we did was contingent upon what Saginaw County did. Had I known that when I was meeting in our committee, it would have been put on the table. So at this point, whatever we do, we do, I'm not in agreement with it, because it was done out, it wasn't, I didn't know about it, so I don't know who else knew about it. So-
Is this something I can-
I, I don't know, but I didn't know about it. I didn't know that there were meetings, and that, um, whatever the county was doing in regards to the youth, that that's what we needed to do, or they were, I knew I did hear that they were waiting on us to say something, but, you know, I just, I don't think it's fair, because we have a whole lot of people waiting on ARPA dollars for youth.
That's not what, that's not, if that was the implication, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, is that they gave us a suggested list. They asked us, did we think or did we look at it, not at the dollar amount, but were we planning to help these groups?
So did I miss that list on my-
The na, the, no, you got the email. Everybody got the email from the county, and they gave us-
I didn't, excuse me, I did not.
Okay, well then-
I did not.
Okay, and true transparency, in our meeting, we discussed the county's match that they were offering.
You said that, right.
Right, and we even discussed, you know, taking those, that up, because you wanted it to be higher.
Yeah.
So that conversation was had. The only part of the conversation that they're talking about is the, that we didn't have, is the fact that there's a meeting tomorrow, and they need to know tomorrow. I did not share that with you, because I wasn't very clear on that part, so I couldn't-
And I didn't know was contingent upon what, what they did, I mean, are we out of order? What they did as to what we do. I didn't know that, that part, I know that they had a meeting, I didn't get an email. And I think I spoke to, uh, Ms., uh, Vicky, that something is wrong with my iPad, so that may be why I didn't get it, I didn't get it, so.
But we, we had, we had the discussion-
We had part of that discussion.
-without the date of the county's meeting.
Yeah, I would have liked to been in that, and know, and know about that long before that, but okay, I'm good, I just want to be known. I'm good.
Back to the manager's report.
Back to manager's report, are you done?
Yeah, I'm done.
I'm sorry, don't laugh, don't laugh now, okay? So, do we have any more questions? Okay, we, we will make sure that people get these emails, you know, and if, if we talk about, because this is not our first time talking about this email. I, I've heard this email at another meeting, and-
Actually, um, Councilman Balls asked me about the email from the county a number of meetings ago.
Okay.
Is it, it was emailed, um, quite some time ago.
Okay, so, any other questions of the city manager? Okay, Madam Clerk.
We're now at the consent agenda.
The agenda has been available at City Hall and on, and on the webpage and on SG Channel one ninety-one. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, leaving room for exceptions.
So move.
Second, it's been moved, and second, do I have any, do I have any exceptions? Call for the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
We are now at board commission and committee reports.
Do we have any board reports? Hearing now, Madam Clerk.
We are at appointment of board and commission members, we have one tonight, is to approve the council appointment of Michael Gavin to the Saginaw Transit Authority Regional Services Board, with a term to expire December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-five.
I need a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Call for the vote, all those in favor signify, yes.
Discussion. Uh, Michael Gavin, can you tell me where he's from?
Delta College.
The president of Delta College.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Anything else, Councilman Balls? Call for the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, Madam Clerk.
Our next order of business is ordinance consideration adoption, we do have one, and it's the ordinance to add low-income housing tax exemption for Brookwood Sixty Limited Dividend Housing Association, LLC, to table seven, table eight, low-income housing tax exemption- Housing Association LLC to Table 7, Table 8, low-income housing tax exemption by amending ordinance 157 of the table of special ordinances.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved to support, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. This matter will be, is it laid on?
It is adopted.
Okay, I thought it was adopted, okay.
Mayor, we're at resolutions. Our first one is to approve the cost agreement with the Michigan Department of Transportation for the preventative maintenance of Johnson Street Bridge.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? Call for the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Second resolution is approve the city of Saginaw annual apportionment of $8,541.84 for the Saginaw Area Stormwater Authority budget for fiscal year 2023.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved to support, any discussion?
Yes. It's, the stormwater, it's just all the water that come off the roofs and stuff, and it go down to a certain spot? I mean, what, I'm just trying to find out, well, how do we, do something we got need to improve to get the water to go back to the river, or what, I'm misacting? Curious.
It don't matter, one of y'all come to the podium, please. Thank you, Miss, thank you, thank you, Miss Bell.
Hi.
Way to stand up, way to stand up, sir.
The stormwater that this is in relationship to is the catch basins that we have in the city, which is really not a lot, but that go directly into the river, because we are a combined sewer system. And so when you say comes off the roof, it does include, it does include, it doesn't really come off the roof.
Okay, so you're talking about the water that goes down the catch basins on the streets and stuff?
Well, no, it also includes catch basins in our facilities, and we have catch basins at the Public Works Building that go directly to the river. All the other ones are in the street.
All right, this one enough, thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Our final resolution tonight is approve the submission of two MDNR Michigan Spark grant applications for the rehabilitation of the Riverfront Ironbell Trail.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
You are now at Ms. Selenius' motions.
I would like for every council person to submit two questions, so that we can ask one of your questions during our interviewing process on the 19th. So, and, and the question that you ask will be your question, but you'll ask it to all of the candidates who are coming before us for this, so you won't get a chance to have 20 questions. We're going to limit it to one question. So I need for all of the council persons to submit two, please, two questions by Wednesday at 4 o'clock to Clerk Sant, to, I mean Clerk Sant, Lord. I'm so sorry, but I need you to submit two questions to them.
To who?
No, 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 don't do that. And I'm looking dead at it, and I'm still growing, okay.
Submit two questions.
Look, I want to say, Ms. Jen, to the city clerk office, okay? Is that, is that okay with everybody? That's my ask of you? If you don't submit a question, don't come in next Monday and think that I'm going to let you pull a question out your head, it's not happening. We're going to follow the charter, and we're going to do it decent and in order. So if it's not a question that you submit, can't come up with an off questions next week.
The charter says that we had to have the questions in advance?
No, the charter says that we get to ask questions.
Right, but does it say we have to have the questions in advance?
Yeah. Yeah, it's, and it's just so that we know what the question is going to be. It's not just come out your head and say, do you live in Saginaw? Okay, but we know to live in Saginaw, but do you live here? You know, so we just want, we just want to be on one accord, and if we do nothing else, we sure want to do this decent and in order, because whoever we put up here with us has got to be strong, because they will be here for two years. Okay? Any questions? See, y'all quick to say, I didn't hear that, but the whole audience hears, so. Okay. Madam Clerk. Yes, I'm sorry. Yes.
I want to get clarity, but is, is, is that in the ordinance that it has to be ahead? I don't have a problem with that.
It's in our charter.
Is it in the charter?
It's in our charter.
I don't think it is.
Okay, that, help me understand, y'all help me understand.
Sure, I, so we've, we've asked common questions over the course of the last few vacancies. We want to create a new list of questions, and every applicant has to be asked the same set of questions, to be fair. So this is an opportunity for council to participate in that process. We assume that multiple council members might send in the same question, that's why we want a couple from you, so that if you and Councilman Copeland send in the same question, we can, we have an alternate question from one of you that we can plug in for you to ask. We also are asking that they be sent in by Wednesday so that we have an opportunity to review them to make sure that is from like an employment and other standpoint, they're appropriate questions to ask.
So my thing is, I don't have a problem with it, I just don't want someone to leave, and especially myself, to think it's in something that it's not, but I'm fine with it, but I didn't think I read that.
I beg to differ.
That's all right.
Okay, I stand corrected, I own it. I own it. See, it's a big person that apologizes when they wrong, seriously, seriously, if I'm wrong, I want it right, so, please get your question in, Councilwoman Sylvia. Do we have, you know what, y'all... Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion, ma'am, that we allocate at least a half million dollars to the CAC and to the First Ward Community Center, so we can get this rolling. I'm not saying that's all we may do, but I just want to make sure we get this rolling for the county, so we can get some things happening in the city of Saginaw.
There's a motion on the floor.
I'll second that.
It's been moved to second, there's a motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Do a roll call vote. I'm sorry, Madam Clerk.
That's okay.
We skip discussion?
I didn't hear, ask for discussion, it was a vote. Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Balls.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Bench.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Nay.
Councilmember Flores.
No.
Councilmember Copeland.
Yes.
Councilmember Sylvia.
No.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Five yes, three nay, motion is approved.
Is there any other thing that we need to discuss?
I got another motion. Most of it to John.
Don't y'all move. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, everybody have a good night.